Well, hello everyone, welcome to Empower Voices. Today we'll continue our series of talking to candidates, of course about their platform and of course accessibility. We do not endorse any candidates, we merely provide a platform for more information on Empower Voices. Go to www.empowervoices.us. We are streaming the live audio on our website, other website, which is www accessesitybug.com. We do that so everyone has access to this interview, which is very important. And then finally, must have a disclosure, I am an accessibility consultant with political campaigns. And with all that being said, hello, Mr. Wesley.
George, it's great to be here.
I'm gonna call you Wesley, okay, because I've known you for a while. So I want everybody to know that, you know, me Wesley had a friend relationship for a while. So your first time on this platform, Mr. Wesley, is going to start from the beginning, you know, where you're from, who you are. So people more know more about you.
Yeah, definitely. And once again, George, thank you for this opportunity to address your community. You know, as someone who cares deeply about people with disabilities, really ensuring that we have a city that works for them. It's an honor to be here and once again, thank you for those of you who don't know me, like George said. My name is Wesley Lawrence, I'm running for city council here in northeast El Paso, District Four. Really to bring hope, integrity, community voices and progress back to City Hall this November. You know, I've been born and raised here in northeast El Paso for the last 27 years, fighting for our community at City Hall these last 10. Really ensuring that we have a city that moves forward in a way that really includes every single El Pasoan, from people with disabilities to realtors, to the average everyday taxpayer who through no fault of their own feels that they've been left behind, not only by the incumbent, but by our city government. You know, I've been in this fight for, like I said, the last 10 years, just listening to seniors who through no fault of their own, every single year when they get their property tax appraisal, scared to death that they might lose their ancestral dwelling, that they might lose a home that they've lived in for the last 30 or 40 years. And for me, that's not acceptable of our city government. I believe in a city government that really works with and for our people, that brings every single diverse group in El Paso to the table, to listen to the concerns that they have and really advocates for them. And so thank you for being here, George.
No, you're welcome, Mr. Wesley. And so we're gonna kind of jump around topics, hope, you know, tie everything in at the end. And you're saying about, you know, the homestead, our home. And my perspective is a little different from other individuals. I am visually impaired and blind, we do own our home. And so I see a lot of my friends and allies that struggle to pay their taxes, which keeps going up and up and up. And yet we don't get much for our investment. And what I mean by struggle, folks, is you know, you have to understand that unfortunately, people with disabilities, we have a high unemployment ratio. And with that being said, we have low income, right, as anyone else, elderly especially, and low income individuals, you know, we all form the same demographics. But you know, living off of $750 SSI or even SSDI, thankfully, I have a job, but many of us don't. And so when you have to choose between paying your taxes or buying your diabetes medicine, what do you do? And that happens a lot, Wesley, and you know this, you've seen it yourself. And so I know you individually can't really address it for say, you know, you can't make that change, you know, it has to be a collective issue, effort. You know, like our Fieto and Kennedy and those others candidates or council members that seem to be more towards the people. And so if you're gonna let it, Wesley, how can you address that issue when I just come to you saying, hey Wesley, how can you help me with my taxes?
Yeah, you know, let it be known, you know, when it comes to these upcoming November elections, we're in for a brand new city. With seven out of the nine municipal seats up for election this November, we have the opportunity to really see an El Paso that really advocates for struggling families here in the borderland, you know, that's six city council seats in the mayoral seat. And we know that on council, it takes at least four members of council and a mayor to tie break in order to really create policy and change that, you know, a lot of us here in El Paso are hungry for. And also, I want to let it be known that when you're looking at fiscal conservatism, I am your candidate. You know, I'm the only one talking about really addressing the issues when it comes to taxation. And it's really an easy fix and yes, it's going to be difficult to get there. But I have no doubt in my mind that as a consensus builder in our community, I can not only bring members of the people with disabilities community to the table, but also our seniors and our up and coming homeowners to the table as well, in order to demand a council that enough is enough. You know, it's one thing to tout a no new tax revenue, but it's another to really actually get to work on behalf of taxpayers to save them their hard earned money. And it starts by going to Austin and advocating for them to really change the way central appraisal district does their property evaluations. I think instead of doing them yearly, it should be done every three years in order to ensure that we are not taxing people out of their houses through property value increases. But also as a city placing a cap locally, because the governor of Texas did give us that ability. But unfortunately, members of our council and our mayor have not utilized that. I think anywhere from a three to five percent cap on property value increases at the local level is a step in the right direction. But I also think it's time that we start being honest with taxpayers here in El Paso. You know, we have to flip our tax burden rate. Right now, it's 70% residential, 30% commercial. And in most major cities throughout the United States, it's a little more equitable. I think we can get there, takes of working with council, takes working with our city manager as well as other interested stakeholders, bringing them to the table and getting them to understand, you know, the situation that you described, it's not unique. It's happening to a lot of people in our community. You know, I remember my grandmother being in the same situation and I remember people just like her who had to really make tough decisions with their budget. Because like you said, SSI pensions, retirements, they don't go up, but they're no fault of our own. Even if people don't do any work on their houses, our property values do. So I want to make sure that we're bringing these people to the table, allowing them to have their voices heard. Because I know working with members in our community, that many of them have protested their home valuations. And a lot of them have not been very successful in getting them to a rate where it's really acceptable and equitable. I mean, these are people that have lived here 30, 40 years that I know that have had their properties raised within the last 10 years by tens of thousands of dollars, and they've not seen a return in that investment in their paychecks. And it's time that someone on council has their back.
And I say investment, and I'm glad to kind of highlight that word investment, because when we pay our taxes, I consider an investment into my community, right? And for District Four, which is northeast, and I know that's an older part of El Paso, just that's the west side, like the far east side. And I know there's a lot of issue when it comes to accessibility, Wesley, and for example, bus stops, as I mentioned last night. Right now, there's, as of last week, actually, there's over 200 bus stops that are not accessible in El Paso, 200. So in other words, if you're in a wheelchair, you're SOL, right? But if you come in to board, come aboard to city council, how can you address those needs of people with disabilities, especially mobility issues where, you know, they need more accessible path, be it curb cuts or sidewalks or stuff like that?
Yeah, definitely. You know, it's important to note that the city has money specifically allocated to that. But I'm gonna go ahead and be honest with you, that our city government has not been really working with advocates such as yourself, really to ensure that that money is spent wisely and that it's used to really fix these issues that people are facing. You know, it breaks my heart every time I have to see someone in a wheelchair using our streets to get around, because our sidewalks are not necessarily safe for them. And I learned this the hard way, you know, it may be a different type of experiment in my mind. But I actually bought an electric bike a little over two years ago, kind of to perform in my own way, like a street study in the northeast. And I've been all over the place and just seeing the amount of inaccessible sidewalks was something that troubled me. Not only in residential areas, but in commercial areas as well. Because like you said, you know, for some people, this is a matter, and we have to be honest of life and death. Because we never know when someone driving a car can be a threat, whether they're drunk or they're sober. I mean, we did have instances here in El Paso where people in wheelchairs have been hit by cars. And that's, to me, that's unacceptable.
I had a, don't interrupt you, but just kind of go with what you're saying, Wesley, I had a friend of mine, rest her soul. She passed because of other issues, but she used to go down, excuse me, McGruder going towards Montana. She had a original apartment next across the street from Carlos and Mickey's. And to get to Montana, there is no curb cut, so she had to go on the street. So at night, Wesley, she had to use her light from her cell phone to not get hit, right? So I mean, people are spending money on Bob Parks and all this good stuff, but you know, those things that impact people with disabilities. And I'm gonna take it a step higher. Yes, we have those structured barriers, right, like sidewalks. But how about people like myself or who have a learning disability that can't really graph text, the text content on a document within the city or website? And so also, Wesley, I encourage you to look into, if you get elected, into how making, how to make those documents and websites accessible for individuals like me. And we'll talk more about that when it comes to campaigns. But just so you can know, I know you understand where I'm coming from. And that means like social media advertisements and whatnot, to make it accessible. Because as I mentioned last night, voters with disabilities are a huge segment of El Paso. That includes veterans with disabilities. And just to kind of give you like a little picture, snapshot, my demographic visually impaired and blind, in the county of, in the county of El Paso, we have the highest rate per capita in regards to the other parts of the state, 10,000, over 10,000. So I'm not sure exactly the exact number, I know it's over 10,000. Granted, I don't know how much of those are voters, but still, that impacts people with disabilities and just, that's just blind individuals. So I might even touch on the other disabilities. But what can you, how can, if I come to you, Mr. Wesley, and say, how can you ensure people with disability, of all disabilities, can have more inclusive interaction when it comes to products and services from the city?
Yeah, definitely. And you know, I wanted to go back and touch back on that last question just a little bit too. But it's also important that our city has a working relationship with our state, federal and county governments, really to fund a lot of these accessibility needs. But as well as lighting, you know, you mentioned lighting, I think that we also have to really broaden a lot of our city services. When it comes to public safety, you know, that needs to include accessibility, it needs to include lighting and safe streets to ensure that our people are safe. But in terms of what I would do differently, it's really all about opening the doors. I plan to be a city council representative who has an office in the district in order to ensure that people with disabilities don't have to worry about going all the way downtown to have their voices heard or their concerns addressed. As well as really making sure that we continue a lot of the work that I did as a private citizen. You know, in terms of a diversity and equity board at the city level, that would not only help people like myself, but it would help people with disabilities as well, really ensure that their voices are being heard, because we do need equitability in city services. You know, especially like you mentioned it, a lot of our websites at the city level are not accessible. A lot of the documents that we provide at the city are not accessible. And you know, we don't even have anyone at the city, to the best of my knowledge, that really is prioritizing that. And it would be really nice to see our city really take a change in direction when it turns, when it comes to accessibility, making sure that we bring advocates to the table and have a really honest and frank discussion, where advocates can say, look, for the past 10, 20, 30 years, here's where the city has failed us, but here's where we can go. And we have to be honest that it happens together with disability advocates and our city really having an open and clear line of communication, not only with the representatives, but with the mayor as well. And like I said, bringing our county and our state and our federal leaders, like Congressman Veronica Escobar, to the table. And saying, look, if the city can't afford to do this, how can the state and the federal government really help us ensure that we're in the right direction? Because I think our city as a whole needs to really wake up and understand that accessibility, it's not a privilege. It's not an ask, it's not a demand, but it's a right given to you by the Americans with Disabilities Act, which I will be honest with you, came way too late. You know, I wish this was something that we've really addressed since the beginning of our nation, ensuring that every single person that lives in this country is treated with a God given respect that they deserve.
And you know, back in the 2021, the University of New Hampshire did a study, and it did, I want to say 200, 250 cities. And they rated the cities in regards to accessibility, education, work, access to medical, transportation, I mean, the whole works. El Paso unfortunately came behind Las Cruces, became behind Lubbock, behind Laredo. If you're noticing, folks, those are small, smaller cities, but yet they have a bigger impact or willingness, willingness to work with people with disabilities. And it's not all negative, there has been a lot of enhancement, thanks to doctor, to the, to doctor, to Mayor Leeser. And yes, even Tommy Gonzalez, people don't want to hear that name, but it's got better. For example, and this is another thing I want to talk to you, Mr. Wesley, back in 2017, there is zero funding back to what they call the ADA enhancement plan or program. There's zero funding, and what that program allowed is for citizens to call in about curb cuts. You know what, I need to get to a bus stop, but there's no curb cut. Or an audible pedestrian signal for myself, who's blind. And thankfully now, today, as we speak, there are 750,000 that came to advocacy, even though Margot wanted to reduce it to 250,000. So that's another story within itself, right? But with that being said, Wesley, if you come aboard to city council, if we come to you, is there to increase that funding to at least a million dollars? Because fortunately, APS or audible pedestrian signals, they're expensive. Their average with installation around $10,000, like a curb cut, or range from maybe 1,500 to maybe 3,000, maybe $5 depending, right? But would you advocate for people with disabilities to have that funding increased?
100%. And you know, I think the important thing to note, whenever you talk about increasing funds, is there's always gonna be someone on the other side that says, well, where are we gonna get these funds from? And it's really important that, again, we work with our community stakeholders and getting them involved into the process. But also, whenever we give tax incentives to a lot of these big companies or even local companies as well, that are coming here, that we ensure that they're investing in our people. So whether that means ensuring that they help the city come up with these audio traffic systems, to ensure that people with disabilities, mainly those who are blind are able to cross the street safely in front of their business, I think that's a step in the right direction. Ensuring that companies that get tax incentives imply that they give a living wage, that they're hiring people with disabilities higher than most other regular quotas would give them. And that they're really ensuring that, you know, we're doing everything that we can as a city to move forward. And it's important to note that.
That's true. And now just to give more information on the APS, the audio pedestrian system and QR codes for printed documents. That's not only for blind individuals, but so many individuals have an intellectual disability, which I was kind of surprised to know that, I didn't realize that. But let me talk about, and I need to talk about this, because you, you're well versed on this, Summitalift. They've had a history for the past five years, and I, there's, well, I don't want to go and blame people, but there's been problems with the lift. Just for those who know or who don't know, the Summitalift is a current, is the paratransit system here in El Paso, is contracted to MV Transportation. And LIFT, L-I-F-T, stands for Living Independently or Independent Facilitated to Transportation. So as a potential city council member, how can you address the deficiencies that are currently being done by Summitalift? Whereas someone needs to wait two to three hours to be picked up, yes, I said that correctly, two to three hours to be picked up. How can you help us, people with disabilities, have that, have a more safe and more on time service?
Yeah, definitely. I want to start off by saying our lift services really need to be flexible. I know, I remember talking to my friend Nate Coleman, who really walked me through the last time that he used this program. And while it's a good program, I think we definitely need to increase funding for it, ensuring that people don't have to wait two hours or that they're not late to a doctor's appointment, or if something changes in their plan, that they're able to still get transportation. Because you look at other cities like Austin, like Dallas, like Houston, and even places like Chicago, for example. They do have, aside from their city transit services, they do mandate that things like Uber and Lyft are ADA accessible. Here in El Paso, we don't have that privilege just yet. And like I said, it is a right, so we really need to be working with companies like Lyft, like Uber, and say, hey, what will it take for El Paso to finally be able to get these services? Because not only is that gonna save taxpayer money at the end of the day, which I know some people are concerned about, but if our, but if the Lyft system that we currently have is not available, then someone at least has an alternative option to get to where they need to get to in a timely and safe manner.
Let me say something to Wesley, just so you can know. And some people may not want to hear this, but I've been very engaged with the lift for the past 12 years and, you know, with the past manager and like I said, Tommy Gonzalez and the mayor and whatnot. So there was an op, there was an opportunity, Wesley, and maybe you could look into what you, if you're elected to city council. There was an opportunity two years ago where MV Transportation was, has some type of discussion with Uber to where if that person, for example, myself, that doesn't need a wheelchair, accessible vehicle, could use Uber and still pay the same price. Okay, because right now, Uber, I'm sorry, the Lyft, or I guess the Department of Transportation pays $40 per trip. So in other words, if I go to your house and come back home, that's 80 bucks that the Summitalift gets paid, right? But if you use Uber, it'd be more cost efficient. And my question is, what happened to that? What happened to that initiative? And it was stopped or ceased or whatever you want, were that were you want to use by a particular city council or I'm sorry, a deputy manager. I will say that, I won't say who it was, but that opportunity was there, it was presented to city council and that particular deputy manager, and they declined it. And my question is why, right? Because that would make it more efficient, more cost efficient for the city, I would think, right? But and those are the things that need to be looked at, Wesley. And before I forget, when it comes to, and you had kind of touched on that before with the sidewalks. What was your experience? You say you had an electrical bike. How did you feel? I mean, I know you could still get up and walk away from that device, but how did you feel at that point where you really couldn't cross the street? Or the danger of the cars passing by and, you know, almost getting hit? So people get a glance or glimpse into what that experience?
Yeah, I'll tell you, it was, it was pretty scary. So I mean, obviously, the electric bikes, I think, go a little faster than a wheelchair. I think my electric bike can go up to 10 miles per hour. I don't know how fast a wheelchair can go. But even at 10 miles per hour, it was pretty scary. You know, having to see how uneven our roads are and, you know, even having to at times use the sidewalks to get around. Because a lot of drivers here in El Paso, they're not cognizant of the fact that our streets are shared. So it was quite scary. I do remember one time, I was going down Dyer near Hondo Pass, where I actually flew off my bike.
Oh, really?
And that was pretty scary. It happened to me twice, the other time was due to an uneven sidewalk. And you know, that time was also very interesting, but I'll tell you, the scary part, aside from, you know, getting hurt, was the fact that no one really stopped to help me. And so that's what I worry about when it comes to someone that is in a wheelchair. If they do happen to, you know, hit something uneven, which causes their chair to tip over, that frightens me. I would imagine eventually someone hopefully would help them. But the fact that it could take minutes, hours for that to happen, that's scary. Also, you know, just the fact that, you know, at nighttime, like you said, a lot of our streets are not lit.
True.
That was pretty scary as well. I mean, my bike did have a, like a small little light in the front, but at the end of the day, you know, you could only see so far in front of you. Which is why it's really important that our city really prioritizes lighting throughout the city. And I know they stopped it decades, decades ago, really ensuring that our city was well lit, because homeowners and some businesses did have complaints that these lights were too bright, they were keeping them up, and you know, I can understand that. But when it comes to public safety, ensuring that, you know, everyone's able to get safely to where they're going, whether they're pedestrian, whether they are someone driving. I think that's really important, especially when our city can get grants, you know, from. you know, from nonprofits and from the state, from the federal government, to help people really fix their houses in terms of, you know, lighting, ensuring that they, they're able to put like a, a screen over their windows so the lighting's not as bad. If we were to really increase the number of lights in residential areas, as well as in commercial areas as well. But it was really interesting. It was eye opening, you know, as a driver, I know our streets aren't the best. As someone who walks my dog around the neighborhood, I know our sidewalks aren't the best. But really being able to see that, you know, at a lower profile, I think was really interesting. And I, and I wish more people on our City Council would take public transportation, would ride a bike throughout their district and would really just talk to people and get, get their feeling on a lot of these things. Because a lot of the issues that we face, it's just the fact that people, they're, they don't, they don't have time to talk to a City Council representative to go to a Tuesday meeting, you know, during the morning because they're working nine to five to provide food for their family, to pay for their property taxes and have a nice and equitable life here in El Paso. So I think it's really prudent that our City Council representatives and our mayor really humble themselves and, and really try to live like an average person here in El Paso.
Exactly. No, you're right. You're right Wesley. And so we're coming to the one thirty. You're listening to Empowered Voices with Wesley Lawrence. We're also streaming the audio on our other website, wwwaccessibility.com, which has over eighty resources. Go ahead and check it out because there's a lot of resources that are important. And so now they're coming for the backend of the podcast Wesley. So what, what puts you apart from other candidates? Now granted accessibility wise too, but in general for District Four, what makes you the better candidate or the best candidate?
Yeah, definitely. Like, like I said, we're really running to bring Hope Integrity Progress and Community Voices back to City Hall this November. When it comes to what makes us better, you know, we've been advocating for our people for the last ten years. This isn't something that we decided to randomly wake up one morning and, and do. This is something we've been doing with passion and with care in mind. Ensuring that everyone's voices are being heard loud and clear, not only here in District Four, but throughout the entire city as well. You know, I'm the only candidate in this race who is going to bring an office paid for out of my own salary to the district. The only one that's committed to donating twenty percent of my salary to the district as well. On top of that, really to ensure that local nonprofits here in the district are able to continue the work that they're doing, helping our people get back on their feet from the effects of the coronavirus and unemployment. You know, it's really important that we have a, a district representative who not only understands our community, I've been here, I've lived in this community, born and raised twenty seven years, but someone who really will fight for our community. You know, these last four years have been some of the worst years I've lived here in the Northeast. Most of that's due to a lack of progress. You look at the Sean Hagerty connection, nothing's really been, been done. And that was fully funded four years ago by the last representative, Dr. Sam Morgan. You look at the Metro Thirty One Project, which was supposed to really be a positive economic development project. Not only that it has accessible and affordable housing, but really ensures that they're close to public transportation. So the really ideal behind that was that we would have local shops there as well for the people that do live in that community to be able to really keep their money in that area as well as not having to worry about going far to get their groceries, to get things to eat, things to drink, and then to really invest in our local economy. You look at the Cohen Reimagination Plan, which has stalled. They're no fault of its own, a plan that would have really been positive economic development to our district. And the businesses that are now across the street are left asking what's going on? Because, you know, they, they plan to invest in that area of the community to really help uplift it. But again, under Representative Joe Molinar, a project got stalled and we're seeing a lack of economic development here in the Northeast. And there's talks at the amphitheater, and I think that'll be great for our, our, our local economy. But we have to make sure that these people are paying high, are paying living wages, that they're giving their employees healthcare, that they're providing them with paid parental and maternal leave, and that they're really ensuring that if it's possible, these jobs are union jobs to really protect our people. And like I said, they need to make sure that they're hiring equally, you know, making sure that people with disabilities have a fair shake at getting a job there as well. You know, and that's the fight we've been doing for the last ten years, just really making sure that our pets, our people and our public safety is a top priority in this district.
And I have to admit, I see a lot of different events Wesley, you know, from animals and, and you know, so that's good. And that's what Empowered Voice is really about. Wesley is to empower voices, to empower those individuals that, you know, or for example, people with disabilities, of course, my demographic, people, immigrants, LGBT, you name it. All these different segments of, of population, we all live under the same roof, so to speak, El Paso. And we need to have that empowered voice and we need individuals on City Council that were, enable us to have those voices, right? One thing I do want to bring up before we finish up this thing, this podcast, once somebody came up this past week, I want to say. And it kind of bothered me because I've known you for a while and I just want to see if you're willing to address this. Something about a picture, granted I'm blind, so I just assuming the picture is with you, Ms. Irene Jackson and Mr. Williams, known GOP candidates. And you were pictured in it. And can you explain that just so people kind of take that away, what, what happened there?
Yeah, definitely. First, God, God bless Max Grossman. I think he means well. I, I really do. I think he has a good heart. But unfortunately, he lets fear and hate steer a lot of his decisions. I was really honest, clear and transparent with my community when I decided to switch parties back in twenty eighteen. You know, a lot of that was because the GOP, and I'll be honest with you, has left a lot of people behind. I don't believe I was ever truly a member of the GOP, you know, when I became a precinct chair in the Republican Party. I was all because I worked elections back in, in twenty fifteen. I was a high school senior in, in a, in AP government class. And the option came to us, to us as students, hey, do you want to work elections? Here's what you have to do. And unfortunately, through no fault of my own, being, you know, seventeen at the time, was like, hey, you know, it'd be great to get out of class for one day and, and figure out what elections, how, how elections are ran. I thought that was pretty interesting. But through no fault of my own, I had to vote Republican primary because I was a Republican clerk. And you have to vote in the primary to which you are serving. So that, that is how all of that started. But I want to flash forward to, to twenty eighteen. You know, that was a difficult year for our community. I remember, you know, the, talking to people on the streets, specifically migrants downtown El Paso, December of twenty eighteen, really talking to them about, you know, the issues that they were facing back home and understanding why they were coming here for life and a better opportunity. And then just after a couple of those conversations, I was like, what in the hell am I doing in the Republican Party? You know, these people do not care about our community. They don't care about the, the immigrants that are coming here for better life and opportunity to invest, not only in El Paso, but to invest in our nation. Coming here to bring and to better our community, into better our, our nation's economy. You know, and, and some of the comments on there, you know, I think were very disingenuous. I think, you know, again, the people on that page, they operate in, in hate and fear and, and lies. You know, one of them was, well, you know, he wasn't gay in twenty eighteen. And, and I want to, I guess, clear that up too. You know, I've been gay my entire life. I don't think it's something that I should ever have to hide from. And I don't think it's something anyone should ever have to hide from.
Or you don't have to explain that Wesley. I mean, you don't have to explain, you know, whatever the, 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 you know, the way you want to live, right? And for me is, I've always been, you know, I have probably members that are gay. It doesn't matter. It just, it doesn't matter what that person does in, was in their own home. But I'm glad you're addressing that issue because it kind of bothered me. I thought I knew Wesley and when that popped up, I'm like, hmm.
A cheap shot. You know, they did it four years ago when they were scared I was going to be incumbent then. They wanted to get Joe Molinar up in the race, so they thought, hey, let's take a, a cheap shot. And they're doing it again. But you know, I want to just clear one thing up. You know, since I switched parties back in twenty eighteen, I've been one of the most involved members of our Democratic Party here locally. You know, I've never donated to Republican candidates to the amount that I have at all. I think the most I've ever given a Republican candidate even back then was less than two hundred dollars. But if you look at now, you know, I've given close to thousands of dollars to Democratic candidates, not only here in El Paso, but throughout the state of Texas as well. Because I care about our community and because I care about the values that we're fighting for. You know, I was the one that censured Representative Joe Molinar, as well as Mayor Leeser and a couple other members of council, when they decided to mess with women's rights. I was the one that really ensured that El Paso was heard loud and clear. That when you mess with women's reproductive rights, the Texas Democratic Party will hold you accountable. You know, I've been proud to serve as a, on the State Democratic Executive Committee these last four years, ensuring that communities like ours, voices are heard loud and clear. Because oftentimes, whether that's national or state level, people in El Paso feel like they've been left behind.
You know, I meant to that. You're, you're absolutely right. And holding, holding our candidates or I'm sorry, officials accountable. Like you said, Wesley, I'm glad you're saying that at every level. You know, my experience, you know, was District Three, last year was a gas card. And people questioned me why to do that, but well, we have to hold our, our officials accountable, right? And with that being said, Wesley, you know, we need a new change. It's happening with R. Pietro and Kennedy and, and I forgot that one from District Eight. My lawyer forgot his name, I'm sorry. But anyways, so how, if someone wants to contact you Wesley, like to make a donation or, or volunteer, how can they do that?
Yeah, definitely. You know, I'm proud to be an open book. You know, you can shoot me a text, give me a call at nine one five four nine four three two two six. If you want to learn more about our campaign and the issues that we're fighting for, you can go to our website at wesleyforelpaso.com. That's W W W dot W E S L E Y F O R E L P A S O dot com. My email is also the same wesleyforelpaso@gmail.com. But you know, we're, we're proud to be an open book and, and we really want to make sure that everyone's voices are heard this November. So whether you are an independent, a Republican or Democrat, you know, we want to work to earn your vote. We want you to feel like this government really cares about you and that we're heading in the right direction. And while I may be damn proud to be a Democrat, I promised, just like I have always promised, to be a city representative that will represent every single person in our district.
And so I have to mention this as, as part of my, my overall agenda initiative. As I mentioned earlier, that I'm an ADA consultant or accessibility consultant. And just not only to you, Mr. Wesley, but I want to mention this in every of these podcasts, is to encourage candidates to make their printed materials accessible by adding QR codes. Because we must remember, like I mentioned last night during the Kenneth Bell interview, if someone has me a document and I live in your district, right? Wesley, they say I live in your district. And someone has me one of your flyers, it has no QR code on it. See, I'm, I'm going to lie to you, I'm going to lie, I'm totally but if someone has me a flyer like yours and it has a QR code, I'm going to, you know what? This candidate took the initiative to do that, to include me into that conversation, right? It wasn't an inconvenience and, oh, I can't do this. Like I said, Kenneth Bell is doing it, Lily Limon is doing it. Ms. Monica Reyes is doing it, Brian Kennedy is doing this. So little by little, that message is going to get across. And also websites. Make sure websites are accessible. Now, I got to talk to you about yours, okay? So, but, and we're friends. It's not a negative thing. It's just more of an education, okay? I want to make sure that people understand that accessibility folks, I reached out to candidates and I kind of got this little response of they're kind of scared. It's not to be scared folks. Conversation is good. Talking about stuff that you don't know, like for example, my life is accessible, my life is being blind, right Wesley? You, no one else can really experience that until I tell you. And then you're like, oh, okay, like what, what happened with you in the wheelchair or the electrical bike? And so you experience, you're going to say, oh, wow, okay. And you understand it and you take, you run with it, like which you've done in the past, because I've seen you on Facebook. But with that being said, Wesley, will you have accessible, our events? Can you please make sure they're accessible, like for people in wheelchairs? Unfortunately, I've been to other campaigns in the past and I'm like, you know what? How about someone in the wheelchair? Well, you know what? They could stand over in a sidewalk or maybe thirty feet away. Is that being inclusive? You know, and I know you're very inclusive in, in your conversations regarding in, in all the topics. I'll ask you, I should ask you from the beginning, I'm sorry, the Stonewall Democrats? What is that? Wesley, can you explain that?
Yeah, definitely. That was an organization that we started really building in twenty nineteen, really to ensure that the voices of LGBTQIA plus individuals here in El Paso were being advocated for. You know, you look at what the state of Texas was doing, specifically Republicans at our state legislature. They're, they're coming for families like, like mine. They're coming for, for trans individuals that are just trying to live their lives. They're coming for non-binary people as well as parents of non-binary individuals as well. And threatening to jail these parents for letting their kids be who they are. So it's really in response to that, ensuring that everyone's voices, and, and we take everyone, you don't even have to be a member of the LGBTQIA plus community to be a member of the Stonewall Democrats, but we just ask that you really, you know, educate yourself. You know, the last election cycle, we did have to educate some candidates on how to be inclusive and really to ensure that they do not leave any voters behind. And that they're talking about the issues that I think most people here in El Paso are concerned about. You know, we're, we were proud to have made some endorsements the last election cycle as well as in twenty twenty two. And we're just really only getting started and we just, you know, our big thing is making sure things are accessible, that they're inclusive. And that we're fighting for those who feel like they have not been fought for in a very long time. Bringing them back to the table, getting them involved in our organization, some of them even in the party as well. But really just making sure that everyone feels comfortable and loved in this community.
That's, that's awesome. And Stonewall, that has to do something from New York, right? Or something like that?
Yes, yes.
When I saw the Stonewall, I'm like, Stonewall, what is that? Are they building a wall?
Stonewall riots.
And so as we close out there, Mr. Wesley, any last words?
No, definitely. Like I said, George, I just want to thank you for all the work that you're doing in our community. I know the work of accessibility and disability advocacy can often feel lonely. I know that it can be very daunting and very hard and there's a lot of people that they're no fault of their own, really just need to sit down and be educated. Not only members of our, our city staff, but just everyday people, because that is a conversation that we're having with residents in District Four. I can't tell you the number of times I've heard people say, well, you know, if, if we do more for people with disabilities, what about us? And I keep telling them, you know, this is, this is a right, right? Like, we're, we're not asking for, for anything extra for people with disabilities. We're asking them for their, for their rights, number one, to be upheld. And for our community, really to be accessible and inclusive, to ensure that, look, just, you know, I want to go into, to Willie's on a, on a Wednesday afternoon to do karaoke. I think someone in a wheelchair and, you know, anyone with a disability should be able to do the same thing I can do. That empowering our community. So that's, that's what we're focused on. You know, people in District Four, they're calling us the community candidate because we're talking about the issues and fighting for the people that really feel like they've been left behind. Talking to voters that, you know, haven't voted in the last four or five years. And even them, they're like, why are you talking to us? You know, we haven't voted in forever. Most people just ignore us. They leave us out of the system. And I remember talking to an individual just last week who was suffer, suffering from, from Parkinson's and they have a, a young daughter as well, who was just, who was a disability. And they were like, we're going to vote. And, and for me, that, that was the hope, I think, that a lot of us need in this community, talking to individuals like that who felt they've been disenfranchised for a very long time. And just getting them to the polls to, to vote for however they feel is quite an opportunity for them. And like I told them, there's, there's options to get to the poll, you know, you can use Lyft. But as well as, you know, the, the project Vida also helps get people to the polls on election day as well. And they're, they have accessible vehicles. Project Amistad as well. But really just making sure people know, like, look, at the end of the day, the only way we're going to get things done is, is when we vote and we hold people accountable. And, and that's what we've been doing these last, last ten years.
And I'm glad you said about the accessible voting folks, just to let you know to those individuals who are listening to this, they're, they're blind or have any type of disability, you could vote. If someone is blind, they have an audible booth, someone in the wheelchair that cannot access the voting location for whatever reason, they're curbside. They say you don't feel good and you use a wheelchair, you want to get off your vehicle, ask the, the volunteer. So you know what? We have roadside voting, can we use it? Yeah. So there's, like you said, there's options galore for us to vote, so there's no excuse not to vote, right?
To George, actually. So I don't know if a lot of y'all remember back in twenty twenty, everyone was able to vote from their car. We, we are going to have that again this, this election. It's going to be called Express Voting. So like George said, you know, if you feel sick or if you feel like, like you can't stand in the lines that there probably will be, there will be a number for you to call, just like there was four years ago, for someone to, to come out to bring you the poll pad, to sign and do everything the right way, as well as to vote from the machine as well. So I do want people to know that because there was some concern from a lot of the voters that I've been talking to, that they really worried about having to wait in long lines, a lot of them being seniors. But lastly, for those of you who do do mail-in voting, remember to fill out your ballot correctly. You know, one of the big things is if you do not put your social security and your ID number, I always tell voters to put both. Because more times than none, most of us cannot remember which one we registered with and that is what And that is what, that is what happens, um, if you don't put both, if you put the wrong one, they're going to send your ballot back to you. So you have to redo everything. Uh, it can be a very stressful situation. So I always tell voters to do both and to make sure that to the best of their ability, um, that they sign very legibly. Um, because after you vote, all of those ballots go through a whole process of making sure it was the right person who signed them. So make sure you do everything, um, as careful as you can. I, I, I know myself, my signature is not the best and, and trying to make it look the same more than once is not necessarily the easiest thing on, on the planet. But just reminding people that, especially those, um, with disabilities who are going to be voting by mail this, this November.
Wesley, can I say something real fast about that? Had the handwriting, just as a blind person, I use, I don't know if you can see this. I have a little box, it's a signature box, because my handwriting is really bad, so I use this. So it's a stamp for my signature because you're right, you know? And, you know, and, and to be, you know, honest, we need to be sure that we do those, those forms correctly, not to send it back. Not to give the system an excuse to not counter vote, right? We don't want to have, reduce all the barriers. So if you have any issues, you know, make sure you talk to that, uh, person at the voting location and say, you know, I have a disability, you know, declare yourself. I have a disability, let me help, and they'll help you, they'll help you.
I always tell voters, um, to save the elections department hotline number, um, just in case. Because I'll tell you, as someone who's worked elections, um, sometimes it can be a little stressful. There's a hundred and a million, one things that we're, that are on our mind, you know, getting voter A, B, C through Z, um, through the process. And then, oh, well, we got to find this one voter, their, their, their name's a little different. So it's, it can be quite stressful. So I always tell people, try to be as patient as possible, uh, treat your election workers, uh, with respect.
Well, can I say something about that? Wesley, the, the voter, the, the worker? So I, I, what happens a lot of times, and let me ask you this question. And I think I've asked you this, you might know the answer. What is the biggest barrier for anyone with a disability? What do you say it is?
It's a good question. I, I know you've asked me this before. Um, I mean, for me, it's just, um, you know, just, just someone.
I mean, I've asked this question and I don't want to put you on the spot Wesley, but I've asked this question when I do, uh, when I do my speeches or whatever. And hardly anybody gets it because they're like, they're thinking, it's structural, it's perception. Perception. And what I mean by the worker, so wondering when I went to sign, you know, you gotta sign the, when you're going to vote. And so I went there and first of all, she was talking to my wife. And I'm like, why is she talking to my wife? So I asked her, ma'am, why are you talking to my wife? I'm right here. And she goes, oh, can you sign? I'm like, yeah. So I guess she turned to my wife and she goes, can he sign? She tapped me on the shoulder, she goes, babe, she's asking you if you could sign. I'm like, I didn't get what she's saying. I'm like, and I'm sorry, I'm being rude. I went, you mean like sign like, what do you mean? She goes, no, 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 sign a document. I go, yes. Oh, I thought you mean a legal guardian. I'm like, what? I'm just a regular person, I'm just blind. Well, my wife says I'm deaf too, but anyways. But you know, just understand that, you know, people with disabilities, we're normal, we're just like, eh. Just because I'm blind doesn't connect to my brain or my arms or, you know, or someone in a wheelchair doesn't connect. Cause so with that being said, just understand that people with disabilities, we're normal, we're just everyday people. And one thing I did want to emphasize, and you said it, Ms. Wesley, the ADA is established or was established to make us equal. It's not to make me special, I'm, oh, George is a special blind guy, no. It make me, how you live your life Wesley is how I'm supposed to live it. The same way, the same opportunities and the ADA is, is in place to help us with that. You know, so I do, I'm glad you said that Wesley, because I, I wanted to make sure we, we talked about that. Any upcoming events, Mr. Wesley, for your campaign?
Yeah, definitely. So we're having a, a birthday fundraiser, um, October the 10th from Six to Ten at Old Sheepdog Brewery. Um, it is accessible, uh, that is one of the things that I always try to make sure that I do, um, of the, I think 20 events I've had so far, uh, in-person events. You know, that's one of the questions I always ask the business owner, hey, is this business accessible to people with, uh, with disabilities, people with wheelchairs? And if not, you know, how, how can we help your business get there in the future? Because I think that's important, you know? I, I don't think there should be barriers at all. But a lot of businesses, they, they don't know of the local grants, they don't know of, of state grants or federal grants to help them fix their business, really to make it accessible for everyone.
And they get scared Wesley, and I understand that man, like I said, I've been in this game for many, 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 over 10 years and, and people, business owners, especially small business, or they get scared, I'm like, you know what? Sometimes it's minimal. You know, there's, like you said, there's grants from the city, there's grants from the government, and there's money out there that you can tap into, so don't be scared. Like I said, whoever's listening that, that wants to come on to this podcast, don't be scared of all accessibility, it's, it's normal. It's, it's an everyday thing in life. Uh, by the way, if you do want to come on, you can email me, george@accessibility, oh, I'm sorry, that's the other one. George@empoweredvoices.us. We do have just a, a quick schedule, we are attempting to schedule Ms. Amber Cunningham, she's a candidate for number five. Uh, and also Mr. Felix Minos, another candidate for District Five. So if you know anyone, Mr. Wesley, go ahead and send them my way, I know you, I know you know people, you know, a lot of people. Yeah, send them my way. And, uh, so, okay, Mr. Wesley, we're going to go now. I do thank you so much for taking time because I know you're a very busy, busy person right now. When's early voting, by the way?
So early voting starts October the 21st, runs to November 1st, and election day is November 5th. And also voters can vote anywhere. I, I forgot I mentioned that earlier. So if you live in the Northeast, but you work on the West Side, uh, you can vote on the West Side, for example.
Oh, you can? Oh.
Uh, Republicans are trying desperately to take that away, um, but thankfully, I, I think it's going to stay for at least a couple more elections.
Cool, that is, that's awesome there. Any kind of barriers you get rid of, man, that's, have people vote, man. So I appreciate it, man, taking the time. Uh, by the way, we still have to meet up at Village Inn, right?
Yes, yes. Give you a pie.
Right, an apple pie, yeah. So thank you, thank you so much, Mr. Wesley, for coming on. Uh, everyone, please take care. Mr. Wesley, do take care and peace.
Take care, everybody. Good to see you.